This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Pursuant to the Town of North Haven's Town Charter, Chapter 9, Section 903, the Town of North Haven Special Town Meeting will now come to order. Again, good evening. My name is Stacy Yarborough. I am the Town Clerk of North Haven. And at this time, I will convene our special town meeting. The time is 6:05. But before we begin, a friendly reminder. Did everyone please be nice to each other? Give everyone the opportunity to speak. And we would really appreciate that. Further, before we can proceed to our agenda, we must elect a meeting moderator. The moderator is nominated and elected by you, the members of the town meeting. It's our moderator's job to bring before the meeting all items of the warning and to assist in obtaining the objective of the meeting itself while ensuring your right as voters. The moderator's duties also include helping any member of the town meeting who seeks clarification and/or advice with regard to parliamentary procedure. Further, when it's time to vote on any issue tonight, please be advised that... And that includes voting on the meeting moderator. Please be advised that you have to be an elector of our town. To be considered an elector for our town, you have to have been a registered voter in town at the time of the most recent election or one who pays taxes to the town on an assessment of property of not less than $1,000 on the most recent grand list assessment date, as well as a citizen of the United States and 18 years of age or older. Of course, this regulation will be in effect all night, every meeting. And if you're unsure of your eligibility, I do have the voter list up front. You can just ask me at your convenience. So at this time, I'm going to open the floor for nominations for our meeting moderator. Are there any motions?
I would like to nominate Lynn Frederickson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for meeting moderator? Hearing none, I'll now move to a vote on the issue. All in favor of Lynn Frederickson as the special town meeting moderator, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. I now declare Lynn Frederickson as our special town meeting moderator. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lynn Frederickson. Nice to see everybody tonight. And the Town Clerk will now read the warning of tonight's special town meeting.
Thank you. "A special town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the Town of North Haven, Connecticut, will be held in the upstairs conference room number one in the North Haven Memorial Town Hall, 18 Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut, on October 27, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. for the following purpose: A. To consider and act upon a resolution in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance concerning the adjustment appropriations of certain line items among the various departments in fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, transferring amounts over $20,000 and a total sum of $1,134,878.66. B. To consider and vote upon whether to adopt Article 2 of Chapter 190, Traffic and Motor Vehicles to the ordinances of the Town of North Haven, entitled 'Illegal Use of Certain Motor Vehicles and Street Takeovers', to regulate the operation and use of snowmobiles, all-terrain vehicles, dirt bikes, and minibikes, and prohibit a person from organizing, participating in, or gathering with intent to observe or actually observing a street takeover." Proposed regulations are on file and available for inspection in the Town Clerk's office dated October 2, 2025, signed by the Board of Selectmen.
And the Town Clerk will now read the first item of the special town meeting agenda.
Thank you. A. To consider and act upon a resolution in accordance with the recommendations of the Board of Finance concerning the adjustment of appropriations of certain line items among the various departments in the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, transferring amounts over $20,000 and a total sum of $1,134,878.66. Resolved, that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance, adjust appropriations of certain line items among the various departments in the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, transferring amounts over $20,000 and a total sum of $1,134,878.66. Is there a second for the resolution?
Second.
And who was that? Thank you.
Now we come to the point of the meeting when we open the floor for discussion for this agenda item. And there are some rules for discussion. I ask you to be mindful of these rules, please. For any ensuing discussion, anyone who wishes to speak will get a chance to comment before anyone can be called a second time. You must come forward to the microphone, this one right here. State your name and address before you begin to speak. Discussion will be limited to this item only at this time. And we ask that you limit your questions and discussion to no longer than five minutes. And remember, after everyone has had a chance to speak, you may have another turn. Is there any discussion for this agenda item? Mr. Frieda.
Well, thank you very much. And welcome to our annual town meeting. So I'm Mike Frieda, North Haven's First Selectman. And I have a two-slide presentation that I'd like to share with you regarding budget transfers. But before I start the two-slide presentation, let me explain that during our budget process and in our annual town budget, we probably have close to 500 items, 500 line items across all the different departments. So by the rules of our town charter, we have to go through with the Board of Finance, back to us, any line items that exceed $20,000. So I want to show you what this means and what this is about. Budget transfers over $20,000 among the various departments represent the total sum, as was said earlier, So what does that look like? These are some of the items. These are the items that, in terms of fiscal year 24-25, transfers among various departments over $20,000. These total $1,000,000, like I said, So if you notice a couple of line items here on your TV screens here. Reserve accrued benefits, $103,000. Well, that is for those that are retired. They get paid out through their sick time or personal time. That's a representation of that. Our consultant line, $32,637. When we look at the water protection, water-fire protection, $29,649. Workman's compensation? We had a big liability this year. People got hurt. So the workman's compensation was $882.52. So what does this really mean, ladies and gentlemen? Can you stand up on this? Do not, please don't misinterpret this, that this $1,134,878 is the over expenditure of our annual budget. It is not. When we look at this and we look at roughly 500 items, line items across all the different departments, and you look at some of the overages here, it really represents a small percentage of the overall budget. But once again, by Town Charter, we have to reconcile this through the town meeting voting that these items went over the $20,000. But in the end, it's important to note that the town budget came in with a modest surplus this year. So we did not, we did not over expend or we did not spend more in terms of the town budget after we reconcile the expenses versus the revenue. Our revenue came in less than what was expected. But our expenses came in more than less than what was expected, which netted out to a budget surplus that was a modest surplus, somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000. We have our controller here, our Director of Finance Administration, Rich Monaco. Are there any questions about this that I can answer before we move to the street takeover ordinance? Okay.
Is there any discussion? All right. All in favor of the resolution for Agenda Item Letter A? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by saying nay. Okay. And the resolution passes. And the Town Clerk will now read the second item of the special town meeting agenda.
Thank you. B. To consider and vote upon whether to adopt Article 2 of Chapter 190, Traffic and Motor Vehicles to the ordinances of the Town of North Haven, entitled 'Illegal Use of Certain Motor Vehicles and Street Takeovers', to regulate the operation and use of snowmobiles, all-terrain vehicles, dirt bikes, and minibikes, and prohibit a person from organizing, participating in, or gathering with intent to observe or actually observing a street takeover.
We need the amendment. Okay. So the amendment...
If you could acknowledge me, perhaps?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Coppola.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Coppola. I work at Seola in Donafrio here in North Haven. And I am one of the town's attorneys. I was responsible for drafting with the Police Department, the ordinance that is before you tonight for your consideration. As a housekeeping matter, we're going to actually have the First Selectmen give an overview. But we do have a housekeeping matter with regard to the ordinance. There is some language in Section 190-22 that does need to be amended. We had some input from a town resident who's served for a very long period of time overseeing the New Haven impoundment. And he pointed, made a very good suggestion with regard to an amendment. And again, this is in Section 190-22, the seizure of motorized recreational vehicles, sale and disposal section in that subsection A. And it concerns sentence number three. And I would just ask if the moderator will please call for a motion to amend that section.
Does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the third sentence of subsection... Again, motion to amend the third sentence of subsection A of Section 190-22 to replace proof of registration with proof of ownership, certification of ownership, and/or proof of registrations as applicable. More specifically, the third sentence in subsection A of Section 190-22, which reads, "Any vehicle impounded may only be released to the owner upon proof of registration, subject to payment of all fines in towing, storage, and other fees incurred, and any overdue property tax on such vehicle." Such vehicle shall not, shall be amended to provide that any vehicle impounded may only be released to the owner upon proof of ownership, certification of ownership, and proof of registration as applicable and subject to payment of all fines in towing, storage, and other fees incurred, and any overdue property taxes on such vehicle.
And is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded. Okay. Is there any discussion? This is just for the amendment?
Yeah.
Paul D'Amico, 60 Potter Road. Is there any way that the town is going to let people register these with the town? Because if it's, if he wants to amend it and say he wants, you know, us to come out and prove ownership, is the town going to give us a seal? Is the town going to let us pay it, get a sticker that we can stick on the side of a dirt bike, quad, ATV, golf cart?
I'm going to ask Jen. Jen?
That's it.
Thanks, Paul.
There is not, my understanding is that, no, there is not an intention to have any local registration process. The proof of ownership, certificate of ownership, and proof of registration will be pursuant to state statute. So that's what those terms mean.
That would be a problem, then, wouldn't it?
No.
You'd have to come forward, sir.
Wouldn't that be a problem? I mean, seriously. How is it not a problem? If I have, oops, sorry.
Tom White, Summer Lane. "It's not a problem because these particular vehicles are not suitable for use and operation on roadways. That's why they're not registered motor vehicles." The proof of ownership is upon release after they've been impounded. Because they're not registered, there's no registration paperwork available. But there's ownership paperwork available on every vehicle out there that's manufactured, whether it can be registered or not. That's why I asked for the clarification. So you yourself, as the owner, possess ownership paperwork in the form of a certificate of origin for an off-road motor vehicle. Likewise, motor vehicles, when they're manufactured, the initial document is a certificate of origin. And it's converted to a title upon first registration with an owner that can operate it legally on a highway. That's when it's converted to a title, certificate of title. But it never gets converted when it's an off-road vehicle. So that vehicle is, that document, that certificate of origin is necessary to stay with that vehicle for its entire life. Transfer of ownership? There's, there's, there's room on the back of the certificate of origin to do three transfers. Upon the fourth transfer, you need that certificate of origin along with a Q1, which is a motor vehicle document, which is a supplement assignment of ownership, and a bill of sale for transfer of ownership. If those vehicles are impounded and somebody, it eventually gets adjudicated and released through the court system, if the owner presents themselves to the Police Department and does not have those documents, they cannot certify that they are the legal owner of that vehicle. So it's important for an owner to maintain that paperwork for the life of ownership. That's the difference. Okay?
I agree with you, Dan. But seeing that the city is going to take these and either seize them or destroy them, there should be a way, the city, even under a tax, like, hey, listen, here's $10. Give me $10, give me my sticker for certification. I don't have that. There's so many golf carts, ATVs, dirt bikes. I get it. It's not street legal. I get that part. If I have one where I can take my dirt bike to New Hampshire and I'm just in my driveway or cruising across the street, there has to be a way that the town, okay, you know, here, here's $10. Stick your sticker on it now. Write up the paperwork so I own, yeah, you're right. This is my proof. And if I'm caught busting driving down Route 5 on my dirt bike and it gets seized, now the town is offered, here's my paperwork. Here's the paperwork from the town. This is mine. You can get it back. That's all I'm saying. There should be a way.
There, there is no way because the state controls the registration.
What the town do it?
This, this, by state law, sir, controls the registration of vehicles. So there, there is no authority under the statutes that are cited in the ordinance that provides for the town to register vehicles.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Pius.
Bill Piper, 28 Bassett Road. Problem with a sticker is it can peel off, just like a license plate. That's why you have a VIN number. So what we used to do in the military, on a military post, for vehicles, bicycles, things that did not need to be registered because they weren't motor vehicles, we used to etch our name into it. You know, with, you know, some kind of device or whatever. So it actually had our name on it. I know that makes it tough if you're going to transfer title to three or four people. But it's probably, I think, there's probably not anything on the... And you know better than I do because I don't own an ATV or anything, like a VIN number like we have on a car. So that's probably our best way to maybe safeguard. Plus, I think the other thing that's important obviously is, is to report the theft of the vehicle to the Police Department. And hopefully, a list might be published of what will be destroyed or taken. And that maybe will give people opportunity to do that. But I'm not sure that there's any easy way to register it that would be permanent, like a VIN number on a car. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay. And we will now vote on the amendment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Please raise your hand. Thank you.
Okay. So that's three nays. Okay. All right. The, the motion passes.
So at this time, I'm going to read the amended resolution. "That in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, the illegal use of certain motor vehicles and street takeovers ordinance, as amended by this special town meeting with respect to the third sentence of Subsection A of Section 190-22, is hereby approved and adopted as Article 2 of Chapter 190 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to regulate the operation and use of snowmobiles, all-terrain vehicles, dirt bikes, and minibikes, and prohibit a person from organizing, participating in, or gathering with intent to observe or actually observe a street takeover. A summary of the ordinance shall be published in a newspaper having a circulation in the Town of North Haven and shall be effective 15 days after publication." Is there a second for this amended resolution?
Second.
And is there any discussion on the actual resolution? Mr. Frieda?
All right. So let me tell everyone, those watching on NHTV, why we're doing this. Well, the simple answer is that our residents are fed up, disgusted, and they're not going to take it anymore. And it's not only shared by us here in North Haven. It's shared by mayors and first selectmen all over the state. I've been in about five press conferences on this. And if you ever were in a street takeover, and I was in two of them, what you'll see is a level of demonstrative behavior that cuts off traffic, that stops people from getting off the highway. Act 11 is a good example. Taking over Route 5. So what have we done about it? Before this ordinance, you're going to hear more about the ordinance in terms of the fines, what the fines will look like. We have mobilized our North Haven Police Department. Now, I sit on a statewide law enforcement panel for the past 12 years. I sit with police chiefs all over the state. I'm only one of two mayors or first selectmen that sits on this panel. So all the police chiefs across the state are totally on board with this. We have engaged with the FBI and with the state police. I have a lot of contacts at the state police level. I'm going to be going out with some of the troopers to go through streets and state roads to get even a more clearer picture as to how this has become an epidemic. Over on Universal Drive, we had two street takeovers there in the past, let's say, eight or nine months. The first one involved a street takeover in front of the Dick's Sporting Goods in that area there, where a call for 911 came. And our fire department couldn't get in because they were jammed up with the street takeovers. Now, you can make a very good argument that that could have been the difference between life and death. Over in front of PC Richards, there was a, really a demonstrative street takeover where cars were circling around, cutting off traffic. Traffic was backed up down Monoise Avenue. Two or three people got injured, but they were part of the group that was fooling around. And it sort of backfired on them because the car went around and around and hit two other kids, two other young men. So what we saw that day was, it was like a party on Universal Drive. Residents were terrorized. Mike Frieda gets a lot of calls. Police Department gets a lot of calls. So we have to respond. So I had three press conferences over this. They called me, the news media. And I want to share with you what I said. Because there's some people here that haven't heard this story. So I'm going to repeat, repeat this a couple of times because I've already repeated it. In the press conference, they said, "Mr. Frieda, what are you going to do about it?" Just like this. "We're going to arrest everybody, every single one of them. They can run, but they can't hide." So I had a friend of mine call me and said, "Gee, Mike, you're kind of talking a little bit kind of tough, right? What would you like me to say?" "Oh, what are we going to do? We're afraid. There's nothing we can do." "No. We're going to arrest them." And guess what? We arrested seven of them. Demonstrative nefarious actions requires consequences. So that is what we're doing and what we've done. We've had three or four press conferences since then. And in those press conferences, what you saw was myself, my colleagues, and police chiefs from all over the region were part of this press conference. I was one of the speakers with a couple of the other mayors. And there was a Butler Building that had ATVs that were confiscated because of reckless behavior, terrorizing residents, because of reckless behavior, terrorizing residents, and basically cutting off traffic flow and basically taking over streets. So what did we do? We took one of these. We pressed it, and we crushed all the vehicles in there to send a message. The police chiefs loved it. Now, it might seem kind of radical, right? So our position is this. If you own an ATV, or you own a dirt bike, and you're doing it in some area that is allowed, probably not going to go after them. But if you try to take over our streets and you terrorize our citizens, senior citizens, I saw they were like, they were gasping for air. That's how bad it was. Because not only did they do that, meaning take over the streets, they were pointing at the people in the cars as if to say, "If you try to get out, we're going to come after you." And there were some people that said that. So folks, what we see here in society, it's not just here. It can be everywhere. It's all over Connecticut right now. There's a level of reckless behavior. And we have to control the reckless behavior. And the reckless behavior has to be controlled by authoritative consequences that are given. Because a society that is devoid in public safety is a society that will be reckless over the course of time. And lastly, one of the fundamental responsibilities of people like us in local government is to ensure the safety of our citizens. That's what people want. That's what people expect. And that is what we're going to do. Would you be happy to answer any questions? But before we get to that, public comment, it's important that you hear the components of this street takeover ordinance.
Thank you.
I'm going to talk about three sections. Again, Jennifer Coppola, for the record. I'm going to talk about the prohibited acts and violations section at 190-18, and penalties for violation at 190-19. And then the seizure of motorized recreational vehicle sale and disposal at 190-22. 190-18, prohibited acts and violations. So these are the acts which shall constitute a violation of the ordinance. There are four subsections, A, B, C, D. A, it shall be unlawful for a person or group of people to organize, participate in, or gather with the intent to observe and actually observing a street takeover. B, well, let me just say this about that language. That language is statutory, okay? So we pass ordinances based upon the authority conveyed by the Connecticut General Statutes, okay? Conveyed by the legislature. That is a language that appears in a statute. It's not amended, it's directly from the statute. B, it shall be unlawful for any person to operate a motorized recreational vehicle or for any owner of a motorized recreational vehicle to knowingly permit the operation of such a vehicle, this is the important part, on any street or sidewalk in the town or on any public property, including but not limited to school property, playgrounds, and parks within the town. So this doesn't have to do with private property. C, it shall be unlawful for any person to ride as a passenger on a motorized recreational vehicle or for any owner of a motorized recreational vehicle to knowingly permit any person to ride as a passenger on such vehicle operated in violation of the previous subsection of subsection B above. D, it shall be unlawful for any person to operate a motorized recreational vehicle, ride as a passenger on a motorized recreational vehicle or for any owner of a motorized recreational vehicle to knowingly permit its operation on any private property within the town without first obtaining the written permission of the property owner if the property is not owned by the operator, passenger, or owner of such vehicle. The penalties for violation, that's in section 190-19. A, any person who violates section 190-18 of this ordinance shall be, one, fined $1,000 for the first violation, fined $1,500 for the second violation, and fined $2,000 for the third or subsequent violation. And, two, any vehicle used in violation of this ordinance shall be impounded until any fine imposed pursuant to this ordinance is paid. Any related charges, including but not limited to towing and storage fees, are paid. And any overdue property taxes on such vehicle imposed pursuant to Chapter 203 of the General Statutes are paid. B, any person who operates any motorized recreational vehicle in violation of 190-18 of this ordinance or any owner of any motorized recreational vehicle who knowingly permits its operation in violation of 190-18 of the ordinance shall be fined $1,000 for the first violation, shall be fined $1,500 for the second violation, and shall be fined $2,000 for the third or subsequent violation. C, without limitation, any person acting in violation of this ordinance where such violation causes damage to town property shall be liable to the town for civil damages to fully repair or replace said property. This includes damage to trees, shrubs, open spaces, fences, or any other property of the Town of North Haven. D, any person in violation of this ordinance may be detained by police officer for the purposes of forcing the provisions of this ordinance. And E, any motorized recreational vehicle used in violation of this ordinance shall be seized by any police officer and shall be forfeited to the town as detailed in section 190-22 of this ordinance, subject to any bona fide lien, lease, or security interest in the motorized recreational vehicle as described in Connecticut General Statutes, section 14-390, including but not limited to a lien under Connecticut General Statute, section 14-66C. Last section I'm going to talk about, section 190-22. Seizure of motorized recreational vehicles, sale and disposal. We've amended the third sentence here. So I'm going to actually read that amended sentence into the record as the amendment carried. Subsection A, any motorized recreational vehicle operated in violation of section 190-18 of this ordinance whose owner knowingly permitted its operation in violation of this ordinance shall become subject to impoundment and to confiscation by and forfeiture to the town. The North Haven Police Department or any authorized state police officer is hereby authorized to confiscate any such vehicle used in violation of this ordinance and to hold same as evidence in any related criminal proceeding pending disposition. Any vehicle impounded may only be released to the owner upon proof of ownership, certificate of ownership, and/or proof of registration as applicable and subject to payment of any and all fines in towing, storage, and other fees incurred, and any overdue property taxes on such vehicle. If the town confiscates a motorized recreational vehicle used to violate this ordinance, so this is the procedure after confiscation, the vehicle shall be deemed forfeited to the town if after six months following such impoundment, the owner or lien holder of the impound vehicle has failed to pay all outstanding fines, charges, fees, and taxes due, the town may conduct the procedure set forth in Connecticut General Statute, section 54-33G, and sell it at a municipally conducted public auction. Or if the vehicle is an all-terrain vehicle, dirt bike, or mini motorcycle, there's a carve-out in the General Statutes for this. It may be destroyed by the town pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section 14-390C and 14-390M subsection C. The sale proceeds from the auction shall be paid to the town for deposit into the town's general fund. Notwithstanding, the sale proceeds shall first be used to satisfy any bona fide lien, lease, or security interest, including a lien for towing and storing a vehicle. Proof that, one, an all-terrain vehicle, dirt bike, or mini motorcycle was stolen from the owner at the time of such violation, or, two, the violation was due to someone else's act or omission if the owner or lien holder did not know and could not have reasonably known that the vehicle was used or was intended to be used in violation of a municipal ordinance shall be a defense to the confiscation and violation of the municipal ordinance or defense, I'm sorry, to the confiscation and forfeiture of such vehicle. Such owner or lien holder may collect the vehicle not later than 90 days. After the date, the town, A, posts notice on the town website indicating that such a vehicle shall be forfeited if not collected within such 90-day period, and B, mails such notice to such owner or lien holder. Subsection B of section 190-22 provides that any motorized recreational vehicle, in the case of a vehicle being held as evidence, not claimed by its owner within 45 days of cessation of such investigation or disposition of such criminal proceeding, whichever is later, may be disposed at the direction of the Chief of Police after serving a notice in the same manner as that required for the disposal of abandoned vehicles under Connecticut General Statute, section 14-150E, except in the case that a vehicle that is not registered, such notice shall not require mailing to persons whose names are registered with the Department of Motor Vehicles. So that's, I think, those are the most important provisions of this ordinance. And again, as you could tell from the many citations that I read to the General Statutes, the majority of the language is statutorily based. You know, I have the obligation, of course, of making certain that your ordinances comply with state law. Because the only authority that you have to pass any ordinance comes from the Connecticut General Statutes. I will sometimes add clarification in terms of procedure because, you know, sometimes things are not clear as drafted, even in Hartford. So that's, I think, all I need to say with regard to this. And the public comment will continue.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Sally?
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Sally Boymi, 5 Blossom Drive. I just have a couple of questions for Town Council. But first, as I said at the Board of Selectmen meeting where we discussed this, I'm very much in favor of this. I think it's appropriate for us as a community to take a position that we are deeply concerned about what's going on with street takeovers. And we all see unauthorized use of this, you know, these motorized recreational vehicles on streets all the time. So I am in favor of it. But I do have a question. I understand that this particular section of the Chapter 190, Section 2, is authorized under 2580. Now, that statute does deal with both motorized recreational vehicle use or misuse in Section 1, I believe. And then in Section 3, they talk about the street takeovers. Well, you were putting together this ordinance. I'm sure you looked at ordinances in other municipalities. Have you ever seen it be separated out? Because street takeovers are definitely very different from the unauthorized use of motorized recreational vehicles on our public streets. Mr. Frieda did talk in his opening remarks that sometimes these motorized recreational vehicles could be used in a street takeover. But that's not required, that they be used in a street takeover, for them to be in violation of this ordinance. So I was just wondering if you had ever seen them separated out? Because I think that might be appropriate. So that's my first question. And my second question has to do with 190-22. One of the last things that you talked about, which is how defenses to forfeiture or confiscation, destruction of the vehicle, one of the defenses is if the owner or lien holder, I focus more on the owner. I don't think the lien holder is ever going to know. If someone could reasonably know or would have known that it was intended to use the vehicle in violation of the ordinance. But the owner could say, "Well, I didn't know." And that's a pretty easy defense, I believe, to assert. Is there any way we could have any evidentiary burden on that defense? You know, you know what I'm talking about. Those are my two questions.
So one of the, I'll answer the second question first. So one of the sections that I did skip over was the right to a hearing section. So similar to the other ordinances that I've been here presenting over the past month, there is a right to a hearing. And that hearing takes place before a citation hearing officer. So it would be within the jurisdiction of the citation hearing officer to address, if there were a defense made, to address, I think, the viability of that defense and have the ability to ask any questions of the owner or the lien holder putting forward the defense with regard to the facts that support it. And they would assess the credibility of it. So I think that, you know, that comes into play. As far as your other question, you know, there are many communities, and I think of another client, I'm Berlin, because it's an ordinance that I have amended, that have, you know, ordinances that are on the books. Now, I'm thinking to myself, was it Berlin? Because I do so many ordinances. It's been some time. But there are many that do already have ordinances that address recreational vehicles. So I think, you know, this will be a circumstance where you'll see, because many municipalities are looking at passing something on the street takeover piece. So I think you'll see those communities probably adopt a separate ordinance with regard to the street takeover. And, you know, the association, the name of the ordinance comes from the name of the Public Act. As I know that you received a copy of the Public Act for your review. But certainly, I mean, you know, it's a choice if you want to separate something or not. I mean, you know, I don't know that it makes so much of a difference to separate the two. I mean, you know, it's addressing, again, recreational vehicles. If there's an issue with the title, you know, and you would have liked to have seen another title. I know, I guess that was something that could have been discussed. But I don't think it's a problem that the two are combined. Especially with what the street takeover law is looking to do aside from participating and observing as far as the impoundment of the vehicles and, you know, the potential destruction of them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes.
Mary White Summerling. Some of you already heard this, so sorry if you have to hear it again. But I'm in favor of this ordinance. Tom and I were stuck twice in a street takeover. So the one that occurred on Middletown Avenue, that was about two years ago during the summer, it was at night. And it was terrifying because we couldn't move. And you had all these dirt bikes and ATVs, minibikes. They were surrounding us. They were going back and forth and back and forth. We didn't know what to do. We witnessed individuals doing wheelies and other reckless behavior. They were on the street, on the sidewalks, on people's front lawns. And there's nothing you can do. You just have to sit there and wait for them to finish. And then the second street takeover we're involved with, we're involved in, was January this year, January 2025. And that was on the Route 40 connector. So that was a Saturday night. It was after midnight. We were coming home from some friends in Cheshire. And the, pulled on, and then there were all these cars there. And they were parked on both sides of the connector. And there was music playing. And people were getting out of their vehicles. And they were going back and forth, back and forth. And we didn't know what to do. We're like, do we, we weren't going to try and go through them because we didn't know if they were armed or anything. But they looked like they weren't going anywhere. So we were thinking about, do we illegally back up the connector to get out of there? So we called the police. And the North Haven Police said to call the state police. We called the state police, finally got through to them. And they said, "We see it. We see it." So there's cameras. And they said, however, the closest state trooper was like 30 minutes away. So we just had to sit there. But it was just terrifying. So anything that we can do to, you know, deter this, stop this from happening, I'm all in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes?
My name's Leonard Thomas. I live at 7 Upper State Street. I noticed that it fails to mention anything about bicycles on Washington I noticed that it fails to mention anything about bicycles on Washington Avenue. You have the kids, 12, 13, wheelies right down the middle of Washington Avenue in the middle of the day, weekends, everything else. Somebody accidentally pulls out of a parking lot and hits them, that person's going to be the one, you know, that has to live with that. Not the kid on the bicycle, you know? So I do think that should be included in this ordinance. And I didn't see or hear you say anything about the seizure and impoundment and destruction of spectator vehicles. I'm not sure if I just missed it or if that's in here. Especially like, go down Valley Service Road on a Saturday or Sunday, okay, to try to avoid Washington Avenue. It's nearly impossible. And they're all parked on private property, and I know they're not the owners, you know, which you did address. But I believe the people that transport it or they're watching or participating should also be subject to the seizures. And that will really disincentive them to participate in the town of North Haven. They'll probably move to another town, but that's what we can do here. So that's, thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Good evening, Nancy Barrett, Cresview Drive. And first of all, I, I do support this combination, even though it does address two, two very distinct issues all in one resolution. I do support it. I do have one question for, or clarification. In the definition of street takeover, it says, "Means taking over portion of a public highway or parking area by blocking or impeding the regular flow of traffic with the intent to cause disorder or create a nuisance for other users of such highway or parking area." And then it goes on in Section 190-18 to describe some of the prohibited acts. And you break it up into both public spaces as well as private spaces. But in my mind, a street takeover, it involves a street. But this is actually defining parking spaces as well. And I personally have observed in two different situations. One, during the day, during business hours, I was driving along State Street and I was going to pull into the Cumberland Farms on State Street to get some gas on a Sunday afternoon in broad daylight. And the entire Cumberland Farms parking lot was taken over with people on motorcycles. They were also parked on the other side of State Street, walking back and forth across State Street. You couldn't utilize that business, which was open for business. I drove on to another gas station and I happened to run into a police officer and I asked her, "Hey, what's going on? Are you aware of this?" And she said, "Oh, yes, we're aware of it. There's nothing we can do." And then there was another situation, again, on State Street in a private parking lot, owned, you know, a business parking lot. And it was 11:30 at night and there were hundreds of cars, all with their lights on and music blaring, and they had taken over this entire space from like Skiff Street down in which they had taken over this private parking lot. I called the police and they said, "Oh, yes, we're aware of it. They're having a, a car show." It was 11:30 at night. They were not having a car show. There were no police around. So I'm hoping that this ordinance can actually do something about those kinds of situations, not just the situations that Mr. Frieda is talking about in which there's an active takeover of either the connector or a highway or a major roadway in our town. Because again, the, the big parking spaces around Dick's Sporting Goods and so forth, that's technically, that's private parking. That's not necessarily a public roadway or a public parking space. So, so I think it's important that we do recognize that this refers not only to our roadways, but also to our parking spaces. And then the other point that I wanted to make was with respect to the, let's see, Section 190-22, which is the seizure of motorized recreational vehicles. In the section in which it says, "After six months, the town can decide to either auction off the vehicles or in some cases destroy them." Again, to Mr., Mr. White's point, if you do auction off these vehicles, what is the certificate of origin then? You, you have nothing to actually prove that the next person will be the owner if you don't have that original certificate of origin, because it never becomes a title, right? So how exactly do you auction off something that you don't actually own? Okay, thank you.
So I didn't, I do not have Title 14 with me. I did not bring it. I think that that language in that section is statutorily based. Those timeframes and such are from the sections of the statute that codify Public Act 25-80 and others. I had distributed the pertinent general statutes to the Board of Selectmen at the time that they reviewed the ordinance and voted to recommend it to the town meeting. But in terms of proof of ownership, there is a lot that goes into that and that's going to be within the authority of the police department. I can't speak to that determination in, in terms of specific instances, you know, where, where they've confronted that issue and what they've encountered and, and, you know, the judgment that they've exercised with regard to that. I do want to comment too, that there are some of these vehicles that are in fact registered. And not all of them are not registered. And there are, there are specific statutory circumstances. And again, that's getting into Department of Motor Vehicle issues because there are circumstances where, you know, there may be allowances even made on state property to be able to utilize some of these types of vehicles. So they do have circumstances where they do allow registration of them. I know dirt bikes, that, that's a circumstance, but they don't, they don't register any mini motorcycles. I think in some circumstances they do also, they register dirt bikes, I think, as all-terrain vehicles. So there are categories that they put under that all-terrain umbrella. So again, this is all, it's all within DMV's jurisdiction, within state jurisdiction, that piece of it. But certainly, and the choice in language when Mr. White raised the issue about whether proof of, of registration was appropriate or we needed proof of ownership or certificate of ownership, because of course, certificate of ownership, we are talking about certificate of title in most instances, right? So, but, you know, there's other proof of ownership, there's bills of sale and such. But when he, when he raised the proof of ownership issue, you'll notice that inserted was as applicable, not if applicable, because as applicable indicates there's some judgment that needs to be exercised, right? Whereas if applicable is a different circumstance, right? And, and generally means that there's more flexibility than that there will be judgment exercised. So those words were chosen, obviously in consult with your, with your chief of police about the circumstance where you may have to fall back on proof of ownership versus certificate of ownership and not have a situation where you do have potentially a proof of registration.
Thank you. Yes?
Kristy Kehoe, 17 Ball Road. I just have a couple of questions. I've been to a bunch of these meetings since moving to North Haven and I always see the same 15 to 18 people in the crowd. I'm wondering logistically how, this is the second ordinance I've sat in, how are these out to the general public, people who don't necessarily come to the meetings every single month? How are regular townspeople notified that this was even happening?
Well, one of the, one of the main mechanisms is we have televised TV. We stream live on Facebook. We repeat and replay the message, the meetings all month long. We have great discussions here, myself, Sally and Bill Piper in the Board of Selectmen. We have the town attorney present these ordinances. The Board of Selectmen asks questions in terms of how, how it's constructed. And then the, the process is by charter. We vote to bring it to a town meeting. Then we publicly notice the fact there's a town meeting and that's why there's some people here. So, and it's publicly noticed in newspapers, it's publicly noticed so that we don't make the decisions here, the public does. We bring it to the public. Now, in the case of budgets, that goes to a referendum.
Correct.
But the whole core of this town charter is the public meeting format. And the public meeting format in this time, in this form of charter, this town charter, is designed to be participatory with the public. If this was a mayoral form of government, now, the First Selectment is the mayor of the town from an overall responsibility standpoint, but I grew up in West Haven.
Me too.
As Paul did, because Paul and I had this discussion. So you would have seven people or nine people at a council making the decisions. You wouldn't have a town meeting called to talk about what we're talking about here, to ask questions and offer input. So is it a perfect science? Probably not when people aren't paying attention. But we try to do everything we can with transparency on TV, with replay of these TV shows on TV and on Facebook. So, and on North Haven TV, Facebook. So that's kind of how we do it here.
So aside from the newspaper, it was advertised on Facebook?
It's, I'll just add that as town clerk, it's legally required for it to be filed in my office and I post it to the general public.
The general public.
In the newspaper or on Facebook? I'm just curious.
In my office, it's in my office, posted on a big, huge bulletin board.
Oh, on a board? Yeah, so people have, okay.
Also on the website.
It's on the website.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Before you move on, if you, if you just want sort of my answer to that.
No, I think I got, I think I got a good answer.
Statutorily, it does need to be published, as you mentioned, in the newspaper.
Right.
And in terms of the Board of Selectmen taking it up as to refer it to the town meeting, so their agenda to the posting of their agenda, their meeting and the description of the item is also required by statute. So, and, and that's compliance too with the charter, with the fact that they have the authority to refer things. So the call of the town meeting gets, gets noticed in the newspaper. It gets posted on the town website as well and filed and posted in the town clerk's office.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess I would invite the, I mean, I know typically the people who are watching on TV too. But there's a lot of people who don't know how this works. And I think that when ordinances like this kind of come across the table and we kind of know what's going to happen here tonight, so no matter what anybody else's opinion is, it's going to end up passing. I just wish there was a different system so that more people, a diverse range of people would come and show up and, and voice their concern. I too think that the ordinance should be separated out. I thought Sally brought up a good question. I didn't think the answer was very thorough. Why can't there, I, I am 100% against street takeovers in any form, no matter what any person is using. But I see that night and day difference between a kid riding a minibike. I, I see that completely differently and the fact that it's lumped together and now we're being asked to choose. I want my town safe. I want my community safe. I am against all street takeovers, no matter who is involved. That is reckless, that's dangerous, it's putting people's lives at risk. It is not welcome in where I live. I would not want that and I 100% support that. But the fact that now I'm going to have to sit back there and say no to this because I'm against the fact that little kids riding their minibikes or the kids who, who do like their dirt bikes or ATVs and aren't causing chaos like this. They're not doing donuts in the street. They're not blocking cars. They're just having, they're just having some fun. They're riding with helmets. They're, they get lumped into this and sort of get this bad rap. And I think that's very, very unfortunate and unfair. I know when we moved to North Haven, it was definitely a different community. Thanks.
I might just add, Mrs. Kehoe.
Yes.
That I think it's a wonderful thing that you've just stated about getting the word out and, and being involved because the town meeting form of government is the oldest form of government in the state of Connecticut. We're going back to the days of farmers when this town was consisted of more sheep than people. And it is ultimately the responsibility of a person living in the town to get involved and know what's going on and spreading the word like you do. I think that's wonderful.
Yeah, I'll just say something quickly about that. Thank you, I appreciate that. And I do, I think, like, as an educator, I want people to have a voice and use their voice and know what's going on in the town. I just think that there could be a happy medium to sort of take what this public format of government, that's awesome, but bridge it to more modern times somehow so that more people understand and like, will show up and, and have more of a say-so. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Tom White Summerling. In my view, the ordinance is just an enhancement of enforcement. Title 14 motor vehicle statute covers the rest. If you're in violation, if you're riding an off-road vehicle on the roadway, you're in violation of, of state law. And you're going to, if you're stopped by an officer, you're not going to have proof of insurance, you're not going to have proof of registration. You're going to get arrested and it's going to get impounded. It's subject to the same rules. And when the owner comes to pick it up, same thing has to happen. I dealt with hundreds and hundreds and a lot of them I didn't give back. And this is 90s, 2000s, before street takeovers were a thing. But dirt bike riding, off-road vehicle riding on the streets of New Haven was a problem. I didn't give them back unless they had ownership, proof of ownership paperwork and it had to be legit. Had to have the certificate of origin and any subsequent transfers of ownership with that original document. If they didn't have it, they didn't get it back, didn't matter. If it was adjudicated, because sometimes it brings those things out. You'll find out that people will buy transfer vehicles from one to another and, and somebody will lose the certificate of origin, so they'll just do a bill of sale transfer. It's not, it's not a legitimate transfer of ownership. It's counterfeit, because anybody can fill out a bill of sale. That authentic document needs to be with it. And if you can't get it, you have to petition the Department of Motor Vehicles for, for ownership. It's the same thing. And if you get any of those situations where the case is adjudicated and the town decides they want to sell one of those, those all-terrain vehicles, you don't have the title to it. You have to petition the state of Connecticut through the Motor Vehicle Department to author a document that grants you ownership of that vehicle because you've complied with all the rules. There's, the ABA rule is you have to have, it's the abandoned motor vehicle statute under Title 14, where you have to have the vehicle in your custody for a minimum of 30 days before you can apply for ownership. So those things have to be included. And I'm sorry, if, if anybody disagrees, any kids riding dirt bikes on the street, it's illegal operation. If they're stopped by an officer, they can cite them, even in a street takeover. Anybody that's there can be cited for Title 14 violations in addition to this ordinance with the street takeover and seizure. So it's covered, it covers all the bases. You don't have to do a street takeover to have your off-road vehicle impounded on a town road or a town street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I want to come back to Mr. Kehoe's point, because it was a very good point. So if I had to explain the most important starting point to stay in tune to this government would be the website. We revised the website and I say that because people are online all the time. So you can go on the website, you can see the meeting minutes, you can see upcoming meetings. On top of that, by just watching these meetings on TV, you may not see it right away. You may see it after it happens. So the proactive starting point- So the proactive starting point is the website, and then after that, it's these meetings, it's Facebook. And also on North Haven TV, there's a repository of all of the films and the shows, these shows, that you can watch at any time, not just during the month. There, the North Haven TV is like a division of North, the town of North Haven, we subsidize with to keep it, to keep it going, so in the top of all of the fees that they get from Comcast, right? So I think, Kristi, that's the best thing. Follow the website, you'll see a lot of information ahead of time.
I think, uh, what Ms. Kr- Kristi Kehoe was saying was, how do we get and stop this? Twenty people voting for the entire town. Entire town, listen, there's, there's probably, I don't know, three hundred dirt bikes, four hundred dirt bikes, quads, all that. People own these things, I paid money for them, people paid money for these things. You guys are gonna let the town, under twenty people in this room, vote to crush people's dreams? There's kids out there, you're right, there's kids out there that alls they wanna do is ride dirt bikes. There's nowhere in this town, A, in this state, B, to go riding. Now, I've also said a couple times, I wish the town would put in, or the state would put in a racetrack for kids to go up there, but, and race their cars, and be jerks in a controlled environment, okay? Even a parking lot, everybody was freaking out, oh my God, the cars are in a parking lot, oh, what do I do, what do I do? If you guys okayed once a month for these kids to go into a controlled environment, sort of, cop there, a fireman, whatever, the car, the ambulance there, you'll watch everything from the street takeovers slow down, you'll, it'll, it'll, it'll guaranteed slow down. But I'd rather have my kid out on a dirt bike on the street than playing video games, doing drugs, or whatever. I, I'm sorry, I, I'm not enforcing, I'm not for this law, I'm not gonna vote for it, I'm voting no for it, because I don't want, I'd rather have my kid outside than in the basement, and who knows what he's doing in the basement, playing video games, doing drugs, or whatever. Now, I did grow up from West Haven, like Mike said, and you remember from the, probably the, what, the sixties, Seven Rock, and all these cars are hanging out, everybody's doing their own thing, right? They're in a parking lot. So if I was to hang out with a bunch of friends, especially from that Legends Auto Boutique over there, if they had a car show, did you, anybody stop, everybody was freaking out about, look at all these cars, oh my God, there's cars everywhere. Listen, that's people's gig, you know what I mean? Just like, people have, you know, they collect pottery, they do whatever, but there's a car community out there that you, you, twenty people in this room could be very well destroying it. You know what I'm saying? And, and there's a dirt bike community, there's a bicycle community, that you, it's, it's just, it's unbelievable how the twenty people in this room get to vote for the entire town. And I really would, I would be great, and I'd be an advocate, if you were to section off, section off, uh, parking lot, okay, there's nothing there, and once a month, you let the kids, or you work with Legends Auto Boutique, and you let the kids have their burnout contests, or their donut contests, or whatever, but you working with them, it brings it all together, and show the, hey, listen, we're all voters, you know, these kids that are sixteen, that are riding their bicycles, or riding dirt bikes, those are voters, those are votes. And you know, I moved to a Republican town to get out of a Democratic town, now just, and it'd be easier, less over government oversight, um, and lesser, like, oversee. And you know what, this is just turning into another, like, Democratic town. It's, it's terrible, it really is. That, that's it, I'm going out tonight.
Can I just ask you a question? You said, it's not getting out there.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Oh, sorry.
You need...
Doris Gander, Hartford Turnpike Club. Just wondering, how many of your friends and bike friends did you invite to come tonight?
Uh, a lot.
Where are they?
Nobody.
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
And not to belabor the point, but the form of government in this town is a town meeting form of government, and that is the purest form of democracy in the state of Connecticut. If you move to another form of government, guess what you lose? You lose your right to come up here in these meetings and vote. So think about that before you go and change it, and that's just my opinion, but it is the purest form of democracy in the state of Connecticut.
So just a follow-up to that, I live in a town that has a town meeting form of government, and the Board of Selectmen voted to take the right to adopt and amend ordinances away from the town meeting, to put it upon the five-member Board of Selectmen. So we have no right in my town to go and speak on ordinances and vote on ordinances, well, I shouldn't say speak, 'cause we could go to the Board of Selectmen and address the Board of Selectmen. We have no right to vote any longer on ordinances that get adopted and amended in our town. And as you can tell, I'm pretty pissed off about it. I couldn't believe it. When I moved to my town, and I learned that about my town, that they did that. And I obviously, I lived in North Heav-, ten wonderful years in North Haven, and I came to town meetings and I voted. And, and I have to say that years ago, going back to when I was living in North Haven, we used to have tens of people at the town meetings, because they used to be held at the high school. Um, and many of you who are longtime residents know that. Um, and, you know, and, and, listen, I have car lover, this is, this is not, this is, this is not political advice, this is not, um, uh, legal advice, this is personal, I have car lovers that go to car shows and, and, and they've been to North Haven car shows, they've been to Legends, they've been to, uh, one seventeen Washington Avenue, remember when they used to have those car shows, those great car shows? Uh, they go all over, my guys, in my house. Um, and, uh, there are, uh, there are du- dirt bike, um, options for kids out there, competitions, I know kids that participate in that, be happy to share that information, get that information, and share that with anybody who's interested. But, um, you know, I, I would be remiss if to not say to you that there are, as pointed out, um, by former police officer White, there are laws on the books that you can't ride these vehicles on the streets, on the sidewalks, on, um, private property that you do not own. Um, so you gotta be careful about that, if you know that your kids are doing that, because we live in a different time, and if they're on private property in particular, and they're trespassing, that is a very dangerous thing. Because I know that there have been instances where kids have been harmed, because they're not where they're supposed to be. Um, so just, I feel like I would be remiss in not mentioning that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yeah, if everyone else has, uh, okay, you both spoke previously, so is there any, anyone who hasn't spoken yet who wants to speak? Okay. And Sally, we will, yes, hear from you.
Thanks, Doris Gander, Hartford Turnpike. With the takeovers, I get what you're saying about the cars, I have a friend that builds and owned classic cars, what they're doing at eleven-thirty at night is not a car show. What I wanna talk about is Hartford Turnpike, where I live, every Sunday, weather permitting. My highest count, and I've told Mike, one hundred and fifty-six dirt bikes, quads, trikes, cars in the end of them now, um, I call them dune buggies, I'm sorry, I'm old, music blaring, it's a two-lane road, they are taking over both lanes. I have sat out there, I filmed it, and I was disgusted, that is weather permitting. On Saturdays, they're taking it easy, there are only about a hundred and twenty of them. It's a terrifying sound, I understand what you're saying, when you couldn't go forward or backward. I'm standing in my yard, I get that, I'm safe in my yard. But we do in North Haven and on that street have cyclist cyclists, that ten, fifteen of them go in groups. I've seen older people having to just stop in their cars and just sit there. I'm not making it dramatic, it's what it is, it's what I see every beautiful Sunday. I grew up in this town, I left for thirty-seven years, I come back, and now I live in the same house. I get times change. Nothing's fair in life, too bad. Those bikes cannot be on our streets. Once someone's kid gets hit and killed, we're the bad guy. I had a young man, and I mean young, I was driving down the Hartford Turnpike in front of Bell's, a couple weeks ago, I think, I told Mike, he looked back at me. I always leave a big distance for bikes, 'cause I grew up with neighbors that drove bikes, and they took me around when I was a kid. This kid looked back at me, smiled, and just did a wheelie, and looked back at me again. I thought, what I was thinking was so wrong, because this kid's gonna get hurt, and his parents are gonna cry. We have to do something, I don't know what it is, but they are illegal on streets, not just North Haven, all of Connecticut, and multiple other states. My point of view, that's it, we've gotta do something. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Sally?
Yes, I'll, I'll be quick. Uh, I just wanted to make clear that, um, when I first asked Town Council if she had seen ordinances where the, the two matters, the street takeovers versus the illegal use of, of, uh, public highways by these motorized vehicles, if you ever saw it split out, I was asking really for, for procedural question, from a procedural perspective, not substantively. I'm equally against street takeovers, and I am against, um, uh, riding these vehicles on public roads, or sidewalks, or parking lots, it is against the law. Um, so I wanted to make that clear, I was just m-making that point of separating it for procedural reasons, um, and because you really don't need, uh, the motorized recreational vehicles to do a street takeover. Actually, if you read the definition of street takeover, you don't need any vehicles at all. It could just be a whole mess of people, right? 'Cause it just says blocking, any, any, you can't block or impede the regular flow of traffic. The, um, the definition of street takeover doesn't even mention any vehicles, it could just be a thousand people. So that was what I did. Um, as far as the points that you made, uh, about, uh, how this is publicized, I, I think we do our best, we could always do better to publicize, um, but when you live in a town with this form of government, uh, which we're blessed to live in, as the town clerk said, this is really our last bastion of pure democracy in, in America, is here, uh, many New England, Massachusetts, and Connecticut have Board of Selectmen form of government. Uh, it's, it's your responsibility to keep informed and to participate. Uh, we have had town meetings with three hundred people at them, um, at the, um, uh, at the town, uh, the, the high school auditorium, it really depends on the issue. Um, but the opportunity is here for that, uh, and that is precious, in my opinion. Uh, and the last thing I wanted to say is I wanna commend, uh, Mr. White, who is a regular attendee of not only Board of Selectmen meetings, but town meetings, because he is a living example right here of not only someone who pays attention to meetings and shows up and speaks, but he uses his own personal experience and knowledge to help us and make a difference. And so I wanted to personally commend him for helping us in this matter with his expertise. Thank you, and have a nice night.
Thank you.
Uh, Bill Piper, twenty Bassett Road. And, and as I often do at these meetings, when I'm, um, like Sally and I are on Board of Selectmen, I'm very appreciative when people come to the meeting, so thank you all for coming tonight. Um, some people regular, some people not so regular. And I think part of the problem is, is that, um, we've changed, uh, we've changed how we communicate. Um, we're used to communicating, um, online or on TV, and we've actually made it so easy to see these movies by having it publicized today, um, that, you know, unless it's a very important topic for, you know, like this topic for the people who are here tonight, you quite often don't get anybody, or very few people, to come. Not, you know, and I, there've been, there've actually been fewer people at some town meetings where, even though it's something that, uh, the first thing we passed, uh, regarding the budget transfers, is more form over substance. As Mike reported, we have a budget surplus, not a budget deficit, but based on, um, state law, we have to do these transfers. If that's all we had tonight, we wouldn't have very many people here. Um, and quite often, um, you know, I think it's, it's much easier to, 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 to go online and, and see things, and it, a good example is what's happened in movie theaters. You know, people don't go to the movies anymore, everything's on TV. Um, you know, you get Netflix and movies stream before they even go to the theaters. So, you know, I, I think it's, it's really important what everybody did tonight, and even though we've agreed to disagree maybe in some cases regarding this ordinance, um, I wanna thank everybody for, for being here, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, anyone else? Jennifer? Oh, okay. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, all in favor of the resolution for Agenda Item Letter B? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying nay?
Nay.
So there are two nays, three nays, four nays?
No, no, not me.
Oh, okay. I saw your hand, I thought, okay. So four nays, and the rest in favor. So the, uh, resolution passes. Um, as there exists, no further business to be considered tonight, I hereby declare this special town meeting adjourned. The minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public by the town clerk as soon as possible. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven.